I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion to the previous agenda for October 20, 2025, where we go to open session meeting?
Second. No motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the MSBA monthly report.
Welcome to the October edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. Filing for the next school board election is only a couple of months away. There are many things that districts can do between now and the start of filing to prepare. MSBA's Associate Executive Director of Leadership Development Catherine Hairston says that this is a great time to start communicating with the community about the upcoming election process.
So what I think districts and boards should be doing to prepare for candidate filing is getting the word out, letting people know, informing the community. It's so important to have the best people serve on the school board, the people who care about the district, who are advocates for the community. And so getting the word out about the openings that you have, and then also informing people, what is it really like to be on a board? And we really encourage you to have some sort of a community forum of sorts, and we actually have a, like a draft presentation that you can just download free off the website, plug in your information, and it's good to go.
Catherine emphasized the important work of school board members and how having an informed community affects elections.
Because of the importance of school board members and the impact that they have on the success of a school district and of a community, helping community members understand that voting in this election truly can change the trajectory of a district and of a community.
Catherine also says that MSBA has numerous resources to help potential school board candidates from filing to election.
For candidates, we have a whole page just devoted to a candidate with like, what does it mean to be a board member? We have some flyers on how to actually file, the law behind it, our attorneys were this really great thing, which is awesome for, that's new this year. And then we also actually have a module that you can work through at your own rate. It's interactive, that really kind of explains what does it mean to be on a school board? What does it look like? What are your duties as a board member?
Visit the MSBA website for all of the resources and training modules available to school boards and potential candidates. Additionally, you can learn about required notices, dates and times for filing, candidate qualifications, financial disclosure statements, and more at MSBA's Board Candidate Filing and Elections webinar, held on November 4th at 1:00 p.m. This webinar is recommended for superintendents, board secretaries, and other central office staff involved in candidate filing. Find more information also on the MSBA website. Did you know that MSBA's Center for Education Safety team has a book? The Essential Five Field Guide from the CES team is a must-have resource for school leaders facing the unthinkable. Designed for board members and superintendents, this practical handbook breaks crisis response into critical phases. CES's Chief Operating Officer John McDonald explains how the book was created and why a resource like this is needed for school leaders.
And what we've done is we've talked to school board members, superintendents, and principals across the country that have experienced significant tragic events, and we interviewed them for the book. And this is really a CES project. We brought in all of our team members at CES. They're all part of the development and writing of this book. From preschool through high school, we train our kids. We train them on lockdown, what to do in a threatening active shooter environment. We train them on fire drills, where to go, how to evacuate. We train them on what to do in a tornado and how to shelter in place. But what we're not doing is we're not training our leaders on how to manage those crisis events. So we train our kids, we spend time with our teachers, we train our principals, and then it stops. Who's training the leaders? Who's having the open, honest, direct, relevant conversations with those leaders who keep schools safe? Those leaders that are making the decisions moment in time, in the first five minutes, five hours, and five days that define the next five years.
John says that after a crisis, lost time is lost trust, and that's where the handbook comes in.
Following crisis, you often have a limited amount of time to win back your school. And if you don't win back your school, then you really face some pretty significant issues, including the loss of trust from your community. And trust is hard-earned and harder to keep. So how do we keep that trust that we've spent so much time, so much energy building, only to lose it because we're not communicating well, because we're not transparent, because we're not getting the information out fast enough? All of this matters moment in time. Our parents demand to know, our kids want to know, our teachers expect us to share what we know. That transparency is key. We try to lift that up through the book.
The Essential Five is available in paperback and on Kindle. Visit the MSBA website for more information. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's Fall Regional Meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's 17 regions, as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in November for the next MSBA Board Report.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda item as presented.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. I do not have any cards or emails, so you're welcome. Thank you, sir. And next is the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome back. Finally, we've got some weather in October that matches up to October that we're used to. First on the superintendent's report is the enrollment count for the last Wednesday in September. This year, it was September 24th. You can see for pre-K, we started the first day of school at 12 full-time and 7 part-time at Bloomsdale for a total of 19, and 38 part-full-time and 42 part-time at St. John Elementary for a total of 80. And so looking at the last Wednesday of September, we're up to 15 and 7 for a total of 22, and 40 and 42 for a total of 80. We anticipate that continuing to rise as more students are going by. Overall, K-12 enrollment, I have several years on there, so you can compare year over year, but this year, we started at 1837, and we are up to 1848. So 11 student increase from the first day of school, and then we'll take another count in January, and then those numbers will be used to calculate funding for us as we move forward throughout the year. Last year, we were at 1850, our first day of school, and then we were up to 1863. So, you know, almost 20 kids more last year. We were really happy to be back at that number, but we're not that far off, so hopefully we'll stay stable. Next on my report are principals' reports.
All right, let's chat about early childhood center this year. We're gonna do a lot of fun things that I can't wait to share, so. This is just a couple pictures of all the fun fall things that have been incorporated into classes over the, over the last month, so you can go on. So if you were able to come join us, some of you heard that we had a cow, we had a couple goats, we had chickens and ducks, and then we converted the classrooms into barns and farms, and we did all sorts of fun things with the farm theme at the beginning of the month, kind of ended September rolling into fall. So these are some pictures that kiddos loved seeing the animals. I asked if we could keep a few of them because we do have that grass playground, and it would help with mowing to have the goats there. The Dr. Taylor sadly said no, but they could come visit often, so we'll do the farm theme again. We also had some fire safety, so huge thank you to the St. John Fire Department who came two days so that our part-time, full-time, we did a Wednesday and a Thursday, that way all of our kids have the opportunity. We met in here at first, and they showed off their suits and how to keep them safe, and the importance of all of that gear and how it worked. And then we moved outside to explore the trucks and all the equipment outside, and then they showed us with the hose how far they could spray and things like that. So the kids had little fire hats, got to dress up as firefighters, and really enjoyed that. Then we had some other community helpers come in. We've had the Sheriff's Department stop by, so thank you to them. Nurse Lindsay did a drift demonstration on National Hand Washing Day where she had pepper, and when she put soap on her finger, the pepper ran away from the soap, the pepper whistles few germs, so the kids could see how washing your hands got rid of all the bacteria and keep our friends safe as we get into the wintertime. And then we also had Grace F. T. come in and talk about the nursing field and how to stay healthy. So our kids have really enjoyed those community helpers. And then finally, homecoming. We celebrated our first homecoming here at the Early Childhood Center with Dress Up Day, so you can see everything from PJ Day to a Blackbeet Wednesday. We had fun with the Disney theme, the kids really, really enjoyed that. And we had five floats in the homecoming parade that were all full, so we were really excited with how many of our students and parents turned out to celebrate homecoming with us. So that was a big hit. And then dragon-dragging, we have a lot this month. I told you guys we started this in September, so at the September board meeting, we had just got things going with dragon-dragging. We didn't have that many, but we're rolling now. They're coming in almost every day. We have Iris Adams, Haven Thayer, Henry Barbie, Easton Bishop, Grayson Elders received two, Lyndley Flea, Alec Eck, Logan Heck, Ridge Hug, Ashton Jamerson, Basely Lynch, Lana Meeks, Aubrey Rowland, Aurora Strickland, Paisley, Swice, and Les Wells received two. I don't have pictures of all the kids, but we were announcing them every Friday, and then they get like a little dragon sticker, and I'd come talk to their class about what makes a dragon-dragon, how to be helpful, a good friend, things like that. But last week, we added in my roller skates, and I roller skated to all the classrooms. They got up, so the kids really want me to come deliver dragon-dragons because they want to see the roller skates. So that has, they're just like, am I gonna get a dragon-dragon? You know, well, I hope you're using safe hands and kind words, and so we're, I mean, next month, I think we're at everything on board. So those are our dragon-dragons. And then our October faculty and staff of the month was Miss Emma Schmidt. And I won't read all of the things that were said about her, but it was pretty consistent that everybody here at the center has said that she has just been a very great addition to our team. She welcomes the students in the morning with a warm smile. She's learned every child's name. She kind of floats and helps in different classrooms when she's not in the special education classrooms, but she really has learned everybody here, and the kids just love her. She's always up for challenge, will help anybody that needs help. She's just been a wonderful addition to the center, so we really appreciate Miss Emma, and she's actually getting ready to go out on maternity leave, so we're gonna be lost without her for a couple months, but we just congratulate her and really appreciate her. And that's our little chapel.
Mr. Bova, did I hear you correctly in saying that you made your motion to definitely ask for roller skates?
I'm not wearing them around adults.
As long as she can put it on the slide.
You walked in one day when I was putting them on, and I was like, oh, we'll wait a little while. I don't like anybody under the age of five to see your old pictures. Can you imagine the conversations they have with them?
I think they're all gonna ask for roller skates for Christmas.
Hi, guys.
Good evening.
Facetally, elementary. On this front page, we have Dr. Hildor, Mr. Howe, and Mrs. Buck. Lady took a field trip to the Great Old Pumpkin Patch, and these are just some pictures from that day. We also have fire safety on the left there. They come to St. John Elementary for our kindergarten classrooms, but our first graders actually get to go to the firehouse. So much like Dr. Cudding said, they show them their equipment. You can see Mr. Donovan reading a story there. And then when they go to the firehouse, like they get a tour of the firehouse and the truck, but when they come to school, they bring all the things up to them. We also recently hosted our make teacher night. We're still waiting to see what we made, but I think they said it was our best one ever. And so there are just some pictures from that night, and then Mrs. Herd really wanted me to take a picture of her sleeping and cleaning up the porch. She's very happy about that. We too celebrated homecoming. Here are some pictures from the week. One of the things that we were probably most proud of is our building was an entire sea of green. Like, I think every child in the building had a green shirt, and if they didn't, the counselors had found a few extras. And when you look at the pictures, they are decked in green, so when you have 600 students in green in the bleachers, that's a pretty neat sight. Okay, we have quite a few things on this one. In the top left, Dr. Solser reached out, and she said, hey, can we do some bus safety? She's like, we're getting ready to do some field trips, I'm getting quite a few bus ride-ups, and I said sure. So she contacted Mr. Jones, and he brought a couple of buses up, and she took every student out on the bus and did some safety presentations, and so that was just a picture there. Next to that is a reading challenge. Mrs. Beckett was doing a library reading challenge with 4th and 5th grade students, just trying to get them reading books again. Kids seemed to want to just grab graphic novels or something quick and not read a real book, so she challenged them to read three of the Mark Twain nominee books, and when they did, then they would get a prize. And here are our first two winners, Lilian Redman and Janna Meyer. So that's gonna continue, but they were the first two. Then over on the right, we have our Me and My Events. Our PTO does a wonderful job in the morning. They do the Me and My Dodgeball, and so the moms are fiercely competitive. And thankfully, we didn't have any injuries this year. We went to a torn ACL last year, so that was good. And then in the evening, they revamp the gym, they decorate, and then we have the dance. It was kind of nice to be able to host that, our own show this year. Down in the bottom, we have the Dancing Dragons, but that's a carryover from homecoming. They always do a great performance at the homecoming assembly, and then Laura Gack, who is the one that runs the assembly, she always makes time for them to be in there. Okay, and then on the bottom left, I just included a video because today, Mrs. Sutton said, hey, you've got to see this. Sarah Roth is doing great things. So I said, okay. So she was presenting at a conference on some competency-based studies. She was working on the presentation, and so she showed me this. And if you think about competency-based, it's about learner agency and making sure the students know what they're doing and why they're doing it and how they're doing on it. And so here's a quick little video of what she's doing with her 2nd grade students.
Hi, me again. Okay, so I'm gonna explain our little 1, 2, 3 folder that I just described. So when they get done with an assignment, like we did one this morning, and I said, okay, go place it in the folder that you feel you did. A 3 would be, I've got it, I can solve it by myself. And 2 is, this is tricky, but I'm trying, I still need a little bit more help. And then 1 means they don't get it and they're confused. And this is based off a rubric I created for them that they keep in their data binder. It tells them, like, helps explain more like what the 3 really means and the 2 and the 1. And they also use this when they report on CSO to share like their worksheets and stuff with their families. They have to explain why they got a 2 or... And one of my students helped, like, they helped me with it too, and one of them said, we should add, I give up quickly, or, you know, so we added that on there because that was things that they helped me to put in the rubric. So just trying to make them more part of the process, you know, make them feel like they created it too, so.
All right, we have some positive officer referrals. We have Hayden Campbell, Mason McDaniel, Carter Brown, Brooke Reiter, Eli Kirk, Henry Long, Paxton Hook, Wyatt Pickard, Quinn Fowler, and Emily Carlyle. And then Willa Hogan Miller, Orion Stirkfaden, Teddy Broad, Justin Samper, Troy Raquel, Jay Seon Sims, Austin Rodd, and Pierce Smart. And then finally, we have our October Feature Teacher and Super Staff winners. Our October Feature Teacher was Miss Karen. Some of the nominees, I just picked up little phrases. Upbeat energy, colorful organizational skills. She color codes everything, like, ever color for everything. Enthusiasm, amazing with students. Can't read that too far away. Consistently steps up, goes out of her way to help. And then our Super Staff is Miranda Terrek. It says she helps out whenever and wherever, great bond with students, always smiling, handles each situation with grace and joy to be around. So those are our Feature Teacher, Super Staff winners. And then I didn't want to put another slide in, but looking ahead, we have a busy rest of the month. We have parent-teacher conferences, we have our Scholastic Book Fair, our Halloween parties, first grades going on their conservation field trip, and we're going to start our first-quarter celebrations. So a lot to report on beginning next month.
All right, these first couple pictures, late September and early October, kindergarten classrooms, we're doing a lot of activities related to apples, so we've got some of the shots of the kids here. This is from Miss Ashley Gettner's classroom, just making some snacks and getting to know the whole apple process a little better here. The picture on the right is a really cool thing we have going right now. Outside Tyne Hook's classroom, there's a student, Colton, there, who every day puts together, he's a big fan of the weather. He actually does the weather report live every morning during our announcements, but he also does a video weather report, and then they have a little me there that they put the appropriate clothing for whatever that day. But it's cool because this day I walked past, and this group of kids were all outside watching the weather report, really neat. On the left side there, we had our new student breakfast, so you can see all of the new students posted there. It was a really neat opportunity. We cooked pancakes up for them. Miss Jessie put together a scavenger hunt. We were running around the whole school. Kids had time to play some bomb games outside, which is a great chance to kind of hang out, get to know the kids, and let them get to know each other too. And then on the right side, you're looking at probably around a thousand pieces of duct tape holding meat to the wall there. The fundraiser was $1. Like I mentioned, we were doing it last time I was here, $1 would buy approximately three foot piece of duct tape. So we raised right at $1,100 for cancer, and it did hold meat to the wall this time, so very cool, cool opportunity. These are positive officer referrals. Carson, Amy Marlin, Randy Back, Laverdster, Holly Johnson, Elvin Rurig, Jackson Potts, Noah Squires, Aiden Johnson, Gavin Dish, Billy Wilkerson, Julian Mitter, Jackson Potts again, Noah Squires, Aiden Johnson again. Why are we getting all these again? Where are they at? Lucas Wells, Rachel Stewart, Connor Williams, Harper James, Emily Humphrey, Adam Ray, David Smith. And then the last couple pictures here, it was the night of the last board meeting. We had our make teacher night, so I did not get pictures in then, but this, there's just a couple shots from our make teacher night, super successful out of Bloomsdale as well. And then two shots from our homecoming week. The one in the middle was my favorite moment from the week, so it was Disney Day. We have a kindergarten student who is kind of famous for, he draws pictures of Mickey, and it's like dozens of them every day. So I didn't have any Disney attire, and I got to school early, I keyed into a classroom, and I cut a large picture of Mickey off of their, one of the board, like, they had it hanging on their board, and I just taped it to my shirt, so that would be my Disney shirt. And I went in Miss Agenner's classroom, and that's where the student is, and the students saw, and they all decided they want to do the same. So since they had a large stack of them, the whole class was wearing these Mickey's drawn by one hundred students in the classroom. So a really cool, cool moment. And then our last slide here, so Tyne Hook was our Picture of the Month. Her nomination said, Tyne is awesome at her job. She loves her job, kiddos, she's always there when we need her, even if it means staying late. And I will tell you, she is the first person to respond when help is needed. She comes literally running to do whatever she can for kids. And then Zach Henderson is our Staff of the Month. His nomination said, Zach does his job so well. He has done amazing things and is quick to act. Most importantly, he loves and cares about the kids. And he, I mean, he's young, this guy's pretty fresh out of high school, and he has really hit the ground running and is doing an awesome job, and has learned a lot, and is a big part of our team already. And that's it for Bloomsdale.
Good evening. As always, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it very much. I want to start tonight with showing you some photos from our 8th grade World History class over here on the left. It's a little hard to make out, but those students are practicing the ancient art of cuneiform, the basic alphabet developed by the Sumerians in the Mesopotamian region about 5,000 years ago. And here's an enlargement of some actual cuneiform, and what they're doing is they're pressing those symbols into novoty, and then over time, that'll dry out, and they'll have their own little tablets. Really interesting project. I can remember Lauren doing that in middle school, 10 years ago, and she still has her little tablet, so that's something those guys can hang on to and learn from. World History taught at the 8th grade level, in case I didn't mention that, by Mrs. McDaniel and Mrs. Rogers. We appreciate the work that they put into that. On the right-hand side, these three pictures are from our Dragons Group Friends Junior, and that is just a really neat cooperative way to get some of our kids involved with the students who have classes in room 122. And the kinds of activities that they do there are highly cooperative and really varied. It could be that they're cooking one week, it might be that they're doing games of puzzles one week, or decorating something seasonal, and it's a great way for our kids to get exposure to some students they might not get to meet otherwise, and vice versa. So we're really proud of the work that those guys do in there. Next, on the left-hand side, those two photos are from homecoming, and I always think that's one of the most fun days that we have in the year, and I'm really proud of the work that our students put into that. We try as hard as we can to make big events like that student-run as much as we can. And so I thank our Spirit Club students for that, and Spirit Club sponsors, of course. Our participation was really high this year all week long, and in that assembly especially. I think, I saw Dr. Healthon post on Facebook that we set some volume records that day, and that is true, but I mean, what a way to end the week. Those kids were loud and enthusiastic and having fun. We didn't have any discipline problems that day. They were just enjoying themselves and really showing their school spirit. And so I appreciate those students, but especially those students that helped put that assembly together. On the right-hand side, there are some of the photos from this week, or last week, I should say, homecoming week and the dress-up days that we had. And again, they had wonderful participation all week long. We're thankful for those students. On the next slide, our Dragons on Fire includes Seth Richardson, Di Fears, Chloe Worthy, we have two, Casey Carlson, Carly Weir, Addison Payne, Chase Farmer, Isaac Barnstrom, Maylee Pilat, Mariah Rednauer, William Shuffler, Kayden Whaley, Levi Smalling, Ian Wolkmann, Ethan Rednauer, and Eliana Moore. Congratulations to those guys. For our spotlight award, which was just finalized today, that's going to Crystal Jet this month. And Crystal has taken over ISS course this year and has done an amazing job. She's communicating really well with our teachers about the kinds of assignments that kids need to be working on. She really holds those kids accountable, but does so with love and care in a way that's causing her to form individualized relationships with those students, and she's done an amazing job for us. So congratulations, and more importantly, thank you to Crystal for taking that job so seriously and doing so well with it. Congratulations, Crystal. I am actually gonna have a seat and ask Mrs. Payne to come up. She has an important presentation, but as we switch places, I just put some of our upcoming dates there for your review. And again, thank you for the opportunity. We'll see you next month.
And Dr. Carden, one more spot.
So I've served on the Gifted Association of Missouri Board in various capacities for over 12 years. Every year, we nominate a parent, a student, a veteran gifted teacher, and a new gifted teacher for our awards and scholarships. This year, Dr. Mercer helped me nominate Major Phil Quan for the Norrie and Herbert Parent of Gifted Award. Norrie Herbert served as a dedicated volunteer and was honored for her contribution to the Gifted Association of Missouri and the National Association for Gifted Children. Major Quan was chosen for this award, and I'm here tonight as a representative of GAM and our school to present his award. This year's recipient has demonstrated extraordinary dedication to gifted learners through mentorship, advocacy, and volunteerism. From supporting robotics and academic teams to securing classroom resources and speaking at school board reviews, Major Quan consistently leads by example with enthusiasm, humility, and an unwavering belief in the value of gifted education. We're proud to honor Major Quan as the 2025 Norrie Herbert Parent of Gifted.
Phil Owen doing coolers, he built a 3D printer for you, right?
All right, good evening, guys. As you guys know, I'm not gonna talk very much, but I am gonna say one thing. I really appreciate that Mr. Bova took an opportunity to take a couple of classes around that were back for a class reunion, and that group was about 40 to 45 people, bigger than that.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five people. Some of them had probably ducked out by the time I got there.
They may have, they probably did.
But he took that group around after homecoming, and it was really neat to be able to just come in and be a little part of that and be able to engage them. I think they really appreciated the time. and be able to engage them. I think they really appreciated the time in the building and getting to see all of the changes that have taken place and happened. So I just want to thank you for taking the time to do it.
Thank you for stepping in because there were, there was one in particular who was like, "What about the principal? What about the principal?"
They wanted to see my office, they wanted to see the cafeteria.
I really want to see his office because I spent a lot of time there.
So thank you.
Thank you.
And tonight, Anna's here and I can't miss an opportunity to, to recognize her and say thank you for coming, even though she doesn't have to be here. And they were just talking a little bit about the MASC district convention that they had today. It was really neat to hear them talking about that, talking about student council. So her and actually Eli, who's going to talk today, were both out of the building. And Abby is putting this presentation together after the crazy homecoming week last week, but they did a fantastic job. And so I'm going to turn it over to these two to talk about the high school for the month.
All right, so we had our Powder Puff Spirit Night Homecoming. It was a great week. This picture right here is from our Powder Puff game. This is a combined picture of our juniors and seniors. And this is Uriah Weiss with the positive officer.
Our positive officer pearls for this month, we had quite a few of them.
First off, we have Vivian Kiefer, we have Paul Taylor, Shamen Shmentov, Alexander Thorne, Rihanna Gressmacher, Dalton Bowen, Katie Beckett, Aubrey Worley, Zoe Holt, Nolan Slinker, Abigail Woodard, Uriah Weiss, and Trinity Monra.
Serenity Smith, Jersey Quinn, Morgan Winch, Kate Fisher, Mayberry Jokers, James Loudback, Dean Gears, Priscilla Hunzly, Miley Harmon, Heidi Dallas Lemmons, Destiny Fight, and you know, Backhand. And then for our Elks Student of the Month, we had Gavin Geddick. And then our Rotary Student of the Month was Jaycee Bowman. So we had FASCA Night for the seniors and their parents on October 8th. We had a Jeffco representative there to help the parents get the FASCA filled out and throw them quickly and efficiently.
We had our Spirit Night crowd. It was our game against R7 the day before. It was a great, great outcome. Everybody showed up. It went really well.
And then we had our College and Career Fair on October 14th, last Tuesday. Every grade participated, freshmen through seniors. The seniors got the most time there, but all the grades did. We had different types of settings electric there, all kinds of different colleges, Missouri State, CMO. Just a lot of options for the kids to see and if they wanted to go to college or just go straight to the workforce.
Then we had our flow building contest, probably the most competitive thing for our classes. The sophomores ended up winning, seniors got second. But it was a really, it was really fun. Everybody competes and I think it's a really good time for everybody to get to know each other, so.
So for homecoming, we have our Spirit Night every year. That's usually on the Wednesday before homecoming. It was October 15th this year. And that's when we do Powder Puff. And then the court people do their fun games and stuff, as you see pictured there. And then for French Club, this club day, they've made these lanterns. I'm not in French Club personally, but I was told it was very cool. And Ms. Yezel just helps the students understand the culture along with the language, so.
Then we had, big one, homecoming. I think this is one of our best years entirety with our school being included. Being there, they all dressed up, went very well. We played R7. We, our football team did a great job. Limley Weiner got queen and Madhul was king. For our fall activities, volleyball is playing on Thursday against the winner of North County in Hercules in the gold bracket. Our Emeralds, our marching band, our cheer and color guard have been doing a great job at our floor, running the halls assemblies and halftime shows. They've just been doing a wonderful job.
And they all did a great job on, all the assemblies on Friday that had to perform at a walking in a parade.
Cross country is at Farmington right now and they, so we'll find out about them, but they're doing a great job. It's here. Football is seven and one and we're having our senior night against Trellisville on Friday. And girls golf actually made some history. They are at state right now. Their entire team qualified for state, which is the first time ever, and they got second in districts.
And then our Teacher of the Month, we determined that today is Ms. Moser. Students said, "She has made significant impact on my education and that of others. Almost every day, whether in advisory or passing the halls, she always checks in and asks how I am, my classes, and if I'm struggling with anything. She's such a strong example, motivates us to be hardworking, respectful students and good people. If I mention a struggle, she is always willing to help, no matter the subject, and it always makes time for us. Though this is my first year in her advisory, it feels like she has known me, known me and my classmates for a long time. She genuinely cares for her students and fellow teachers, leading by example and encouraging us in every way. I am truly thankful for her kindness and support, which I know I have, which I know will have a lasting impact, and positive effect on my life."
I can back this up. Ms. Moser does a great job communicating with anybody. I've never had her class personally and every time I see her, she asks how I am. She comes and says, "Are you doing okay if I ever have a down day or if I, maybe I just didn't roll off this wrong side of the bed in the morning?" She'll always ask how I'm doing. And again, I've never had a class with her and she just connects with every student that she meets, so.
So thank you, Ms. Moser.
And thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
It was really fun, though. It was.
Very competitive.
It makes them feel a little better.
So they were all number one.
Next on my report is professional development day. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Parker.
Yes, we had professional development at the end of September. We had a wide variety of offerings. We took some of the feedback that we've had in your class and we are able to allow for a little bit more building-led PD. So I try to mix up the, the slide a little bit more than what we normally do. So these are the offerings that we had. Everyone attended Portrait of a Graduate and then I tried to put some of the CSIC goals that all of these address. Portrait of a Graduate is a big goal that we have as far as developing competencies for our students to graduate with beyond academics. So we have five durable skills that we want students to graduate with, which are communication, initiative, tenacity, problem solving, and curiosity. Curiosity has a different standard than what you maybe would think of. It is curiosity in the sense of learning and wanting to learn more, but it also serves a dual purpose of empathy. And curiosity in the sense of putting yourself in other people's shoes and saying, "I wonder why they're coming from that perspective." And so when you look at the world today, I think that's not such a bad skill to have. CDE practices was something that the middle school took on. They said, "We just need a little bit more time. We're really working on this, but the one thing that teachers keep coming to us for is time." Standards and proficiency skills, as you know, elementary is working on expanding standards-based grading and they're also working on refining some of the grading practices that they have, so they were able to use some of that time. Early childhood is working on their curriculum and they're doing a great job with that. High school, they were in a session on AI and I think halfway through it, they're emailing Dr. Boyd and myself saying, "We got to share this." They have too much good stuff for people to not know about. So they are able to present Danny Yamnitz and who was it?
Elizabeth Schmitz, right?
And they're able to present to the high school on some of the things that they learned through their AI session. And then benchmark assessment data is our iReady platform. We probably need another session with them because they said it was good, but it was a lot and it went fast, so just using that data. Alice is something that we are continuously working on. It may not have a CSIC goal attached to it, but it's something that's necessary. Same with our required videos and then dial training for the pairs in case if they want to come help out when we have our kindergarten screen. I did put our overall feedback. Overall, it's pretty good. There were a couple of spots where it being applicable was a little bit lower. I think some of them was because some of our pairs are a little bit great self-starters and they ended up watching videos before the PD day, so we were looking for them to do. Upcoming PD, we do have January 5th. It's a split PD workday. And then on February 13th, we've got a teacher PD as well. I did want to show you how some of the PD is being inactive. And this isn't just because of that one day, but it's an ongoing process. As I mentioned, the Portrait of a Graduate has some of those durable skills. And if you listen, they won't name the durable skills, but you can tell that they're incorporating some of those skills that are in addition to just learning math, ELA, science, and so on.
Hi, I'm Lenny. I'm a second grader. This is my learning pit and this is climbing out of the learning pit. One means I don't get it. I'm confused. I give up quickly. I don't use strategies. And one means I don't meet. Two means approaching. It's tricky, but I'm trying. I use strategies and tools. I, I keep working even when it's hard and I ask questions, learn more. Three means...
Proficient.
Proficient. I've got it. I can explain my thinking. I can solve it by myself. I can help others understand.
Okay.
Then this would be a one. This would be a two. This would be a three.
How do you use that?
When, when we say, "I'm trying to learn," it's, it's usually two.
Okay. Do you do that all the time or just at certain times during the day?
I usually keep it out all the time.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Lenny.
You're welcome.
And that was a second grader explaining how they use it. And then in middle school, they're explaining to me how they use their habit chart. And Ms. Diamond mentioned that, she goes, "You know, I had a little bit of preparation having students churn in assignments that I'm not grading." Thank you. There is no way that they're not turning those out. And she said she's starting to see students take the assignments a little bit more seriously because they know why they're turning it in and they're getting feedback from her on how to get to the next level. Almost like a video game, you're leveling up. But now they're, they're grading themselves on their habits as they're completing these assignments, so.
Okay, so we in our science classes have just started rewarding our durable skills, which kind of align with our Portrait of a Graduate skills. Things we think students need to know how to do to be successful, not only in the classroom, but also in life. So we, with our students, created some habits that they need to have to be accountable for, to be successful. And we really made these because we think there should be a very big separation between behavior and grades, even though sometimes that might be hard, like a kid turning in something three weeks late and you're like, "I really want to take 20% away because this is really inconvenient for me," but it's really not fair for the kid.
It's not a true representation of what the student knows.
Right.
But we still want to hold them accountable because we have to have some sort of order in our classes. So we've come up with a habit score, which is a score that we give them once a quarter. And there is a habit reward day at the end, so we do give them grace. But let's say that they did not put forth their best effort on a classwork assignment. Well, their habit score is going to drop. And at the end of the quarter, students that have so many points will get a reward day.
I threw those videos in, just so you could see, sometimes we get the report of what we did, but you never get to see the fruition of all the work that teachers have been putting in. So those are just a few of many examples of the hard work that teachers have been putting in.
Next month, if I may interrupt for just a second, I hope to share with you what the kids are now saying about competency-based education. One of the things that Mrs. Diamond has done is as she has time, she's collecting data from her kids about what strategies they like, what strategies they don't like, why they think, or if they think competency-based education is better than traditional strategies. And she said some of the stuff that she's getting back from the kids has just blown her mind. Like she did not realize how much of it was sinking in and how much of it they were able to articulate themselves until she went to the trouble to actually ask them. And now that she is, she's getting some really impressive language back from the kids and I hope to share that with you guys next month.
Dr. Mercer also had, my son has Mrs. Dobbs and he comes home often talking about proficient, advanced. And he was one of six kids, he got advanced and he's so proud of it. And like one of his classes, proficient and just bragging about what it means to do that instead of getting just...
So he's already talking in the language of mastering the content instead of what his percentage grade was?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah.
You can watch, I just, "I'm advanced, Dad. He's like, "I'm advanced." But yes, it's going great, I'm feeling.
And last on my, if last on my superintendent reported safety report, you will see you have a fire and earthquake drill in August and then you had a tornado drill. That's remarkable.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Mr. Gediger texted me Friday morning.
Yeah.
If you're coming to the Board of Education to float, wear your Hawaiian shirt. We're all wearing our Hawaiian shirts.
So I con Gary and Jamie into, because you showed up with no Hawaiian shirt.
All right, on to unfinished business. First item is Process G update.
Just a few for you. We're focusing on our wrestling facility. As you can see, that the foundation footings are poured, a whole lot of dirt work being done. What you can't see there is where the current laptop parking lot is. That's about a 10-foot drop off down to the dirt work there. And so they've started putting it all as well. So these are just a few pictures of what's going on with it. That's a great picture of exactly where it's located behind the pack. And it's going to be a great parking area down there once we get it paved. Just a few renderings of what the outside and inside will look like. Color schemes as well. With as much as our, as big as our boys' wrestling program is, our girls' wrestling program has really taken off. So we had Coach Bondell at our meeting, in our last meeting, when we were talking about capacity. And this building's going to be full. We're going to have boys and girls in there. And with the mat size that we have, I think we're, we're right at capacity of where we're at. And the programs are both just really big, so. We're looking forward to having this facility open, hopefully August of 26. So that's Process G and I believe, oh, it's not going to be as bad as it was.
Well, I want to point out Friday, most of those are classes 75. Some of them are my classmates. But you know, besides the, what happened to the lockers? Was the gym this size when I was here? Those, they were great questions. We took them, "Where are the typewriters?" I got that question. We took them into the business class and showed them around in the cafeteria and a few got to go to the principal's office. But some of them had stepped in that building 50 years. And they were just amazed at the facility and not only how it had grown, but just the maintenance of the parts that were there when they were there, whether it be English hallway or math hallway. So I just want to, you know, point out and thank the community for helping us grow responsibly, but also the maintenance, custodial crew, and administration for maintaining what's already there. Next, we have instructional program presentation, high school art.
Hi. I didn't know what to expect or you expected, but in Fundamentals of Art, I'll just pull up one of these. We're doing color theory right now and we just finished this project, but it, it is hard to find magazines nowadays. But I did... but it is hard to find magazines nowadays, but I dig through dumpsters and we find these. But it's the discussions that the kids have whenever they're talking about what is yellow orange, or what is orange, and finding them and where they place them on the color wheel, and then all the colors mixed together and make brown. And then the things around are scales, which are 10-tone shading gradation, and they have to show me in 10 steps what those are. And it's a group project. They don't typically like group projects, and neither do I, honestly, but how I get through this is, we have a rubric where they grade each other, and then we average the scores, and that many points can be deducted from the total score of the color wheel for the people that do not work as hard. And I am the ultimate X-factor in that, but sometimes I don't listen to them at all, because they'll give everybody a zero. Whenever I heard this girl, three days in a row, said, "I don't feel like doing anything today," and all she did is cut pieces of paper the whole time and didn't help her group at all. And the other people, like, struggled too, so she ended up getting a deduction when the people in her group were too nice, and they just gave her, said that she didn't need any points. Take it off. So that's colored wheels. This, and you're more than welcome to come up and get stuff or look at things whenever you want. But these are a few projects that we did on shoes, and Mrs. Kime and I have done this for a couple of years now, but I felt like changing it up this year, and I still stuck with shoes, but it was the shoes that the students were wearing. And if they didn't have tennis shoes on that day, they needed to bring them the next day. And these get the different types of shading styles in, kind of in a Picasso-esque way with the geometric shapes that we put on there. So they use hatching, crosshatching, blending, pointillism, and scumpling, and we get all that in there. And then these are the advanced classes. This is all studio art, where the students actually choose their projects. They are seniors. They have to have had a full year of Fundamentals of Art, a full year of an advanced art class. They could have taken it when they were a sophomore and haven't been back until their senior year. But they choose their own projects. But if they say don't challenge themselves enough, then I set the parameters on there. But usually, they do a pretty good job because they know what I expect. I have some drawing and painting projects, and I just wanted to see, since I get students from Kime and my class, to see where everybody is at the beginning of the year. This was the very first project they did on shading, and we just did crumpled paper. This is from drawing class, and it's, this one's completely colored pencil, and we use these pencils called Colorless Blenders, which is basically just wax, and it helps you use colored pencils so that they look more vibrant. And then I'm gonna brag on Anna Fisher here. Did you know I brought this? So, but she is in Drawing and Painting three? Oh, two. Three, three. And she picks her own projects based on if I think they're difficult enough for her, and I just have to push her every once in a while. Kind of a hack. I nag a little bit. It's okay. But we make it through, and there's my instructional program presentation.
All right. Next on agenda is new business. We have none. Any personnel changes approved during closed session this evening will be provided in the draft meeting minutes. 57,000 hours of adjournments.
I will motion to adjourn the open session at the regular meeting of the Board of Education of St. John's U. County.
Motion has second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a good night.